About to begin, but before we begin, may I have a motion to approve the personnel docket?
I move that we approve the personnel docket.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing now, Ms. Tanner, please call the roll. Basine?
Aye.
Lanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan? Martin?
Aye.
Buffalo?
Aye. We're going to move on board to 3.01, school board goals update, Dr. Birdsong.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair Buffalo, Vice Chair Dr. Gabriel, members of the board, staff, our community. This evening or this afternoon, Dr. Poe will be providing an update regarding our school board goals. We have some data to share with you related to chronic absenteeism and dropout. So without further ado, Dr. Poe, please.
All right, thank you, Dr. Birdsong. Good afternoon, Chair, Madam Chair Buffalo, Vice Chair Dr. Gabriel, members of the board, Dr. Birdsong. Tonight, we'll start with school board goal one, measure 1.1. And as a reminder, goal one is related to the percentage of schools being fully accredited by, by the end of the 27, 28 school year. Measure one specifically is focused on the, oop, Ms. Tanner, let's see, sorry, this is measure two.
I want that one, okay.
That's all right, I got it. Measure one specifically is focused on the percentage of students who are chronically absent and to decrease those rates from 20% to 19% for quarter one of 23, 24. The breakdown's on the screen every time I go through this. So the breakdown's on the screen of how we want to decrease our chronically absent students quarter by quarter through the school year. And you can see based off the data that the quarter four rate decreased 1.4%, down to 18.1%. Although the target wasn't met, the target was set at 16%. We did see over a 2% improvement from last year, which is good reason to celebrate for sure. We're on the right track of decreasing the rates from last year. What's going well overall, based on the preliminary results, only one school is being projected to be in the red for chronic absenteeism compared to 10 schools during the previous year. So big celebrations there, I believe, for our chronic absenteeism rates. It really did positively affect our schools, the focus we had on attendance this year. And even though it's, you know, not, not going well, but the, on the other side of things, even with the improvements over last year, we still have 11 schools that are in the yellow for chronic absenteeism, so attendance remains a focus for the division. But we did see drastic improvement, not only at the division average, but at the school levels as well for improvement. So next steps coming into the year here very shortly, you know, of course, the continued division-wide focus on MTSS supports to include school-level attendance plans, continued focus on professional development for MTSS teams. We're going to continue our attendance challenges and campaigns that we've had going on. And as the data show, you know, we really need to continue that focus at the pre-kindergarten and kindergarten levels. Again, even though pre-K doesn't count in our accreditation rates, we see higher absentee rates with pre-K and kindergarten. And if we feel if we really focus in on those areas, we'll see longer-term gains with that. And that concludes just the overview of our chronic absenteeism measure.
School board, you heard the report. Are there any questions? I first have a comment. On the next steps, I'm glad to see the continued focus on pre-K and kindergarten levels because kind of build that foundation mindset. But unfortunately, pre-kindergarten is the first time many kids come together, right? And sickness and those kind of things, so. But I'm glad to see that our focus is at that level to kind of change the mindset of, you know, coming to school.
As far as pre-K kids?
Pre-K kindergarten too, just getting, when you build that foundation that, you know, coming to school is important and we want you here.
Can I say, I'm sorry?
Yes.
This is, I recently had a conversation, I'm sure we all get these calls from new parents that are looking for, you know, nervous about those first steps of entering their children, registering their children for pre-K. And, and so I recently had this conversation. So I think that there's a message here for parents as well. The level of professional, we're dedicated to a high level of professional development for our pre-K students all the way, all the way up to grade 12. So it starts in the beginning, those are when the building blocks are laid so that they can excel academically and socially and emotionally. So I just want to make sure that message is clear there for the parents.
So just quickly, thank you, Dr. Poe. Particularly on the next steps, if I'm not mistaken, we approved a position, Dr. Birdsong, right, on attendance. So I'm taking that. When we come back around here, probably some additional steps. Because I, I know we see these things here, but what I'm not hearing is why aren't they coming? Or are there any potential barriers that are, that, you know, from a board level that we could support, you know, the legislature, things like that? So I see this as high level, but hopefully at some point with that new person in there that we could get something that kind of gets a little bit deeper and some recommendations as to how we might be able to, to support that. I know we're doing the challenges and things like that, but if there's other things that are barriers out there.
The new position will most certainly provide another layer of support for building principals. And when we had our SLI last week, which went very, very well, I think our staff, they're very much motivated and ready for August the 19th. I assured building principals that they would have some input on that job description and what it needs to look like, and we just need the time because they are, you know, busy trying to get ready for teachers and students, and we're going to get there. But it's on the radar, they are aware of the position, they're excited about the position. Of course, we're going to rename the position, but that will be in place. So it's not like they don't know what's going to, what they need to do, they know what they need to do. We made that very clear, everybody's on board, but this will be additional support.
Anyone else, Ms. Basine?
Yes. So regarding what's, what's going well and not going well, so it's good to see that, you know, we have one school projected in the red compared to, you know, what we saw last year. But could you talk a little bit more about what strategies led to that improvement and how we know that that strategy worked? You know, and then same thing with what's not going well, what wasn't working well that, that we know of, and what are we going to do to change it for those that are still in the yellow, the 11 schools that are in the yellow?
So, you know, overall, strategy by strategy, I think it was a combination of all the efforts and the focus that was, was put on it. So when it was decided to be a measure, you know, within the school board goals and the, you know, last year at, at SLI, Dr. Birdsong made very clear that that was one of the big three rocks, and that's continued this year. Attendance is one of the big three rocks because they're not going to learn if they're not going to be here. So creating that division-level focus and then making it a focus on, at MTSS meetings, the, the communications department and all they did with making parents more aware of the importance of coming to school, the diligence of the phone calls at the student level when they missed the, the days and making sure they get the calls and the communications home to parents. I think all of that combined helped, helped bring up our levels to where it was. And I also think still, you know, another year out from the pandemic has helped where, you know, we've learned if a child has a cough or a sniffle, you don't need to keep them home just for the cough or the sniffle if they don't truly have signs of COVID or, or anything that's, you know, going to get others sick. So, but down to the level, you know, I don't have the data right here down to the level to say what specific, you know, one thing, I don't think it was one specific thing. It was just the focus that we had division-wide that created the focus, that the principals had school-wide that created the focus that the teachers had and that caring approach to saying it's, it's just important that you're here.
I think it would be good for us, you know, as a board to have that clear. I mean, this is very, very high level, but to also have a clear understanding of the strategies that are being used that are working, that are effective, and that you know that they are effective. And same thing for what isn't working, so that if there is a strategy change or another solution or another resource or whatever it is that needs to be utilized, we'll be able to plan for that. And so, and then tying that into the next steps, it's, you know, I appreciate the continuation of some of the things that we've seen in previous reports on this specific goal. But for me, to understand, you know, what continued division-wide focus on MTSS, for instance, so what does that mean? Are we talking about increasing fidelity of, in, in each of our schools? What do we know where we are right now, and what are we trying to get to in terms of MTSS? If that is, you know, the focus. And so that would be helpful, I think, in the report to, to have more knowledge about that. And same with the professional development for MTSS. It's, you know, do we know if it's effective? Do we know if it's, teachers are responding well to it? And that's why it's a continued next step. I think that kind of explanation would be helpful for us.
I'll work with, I'll work with the MTSS team to see, see what kind of data that we can dig out. You know, it is, you know, again, with, with attendance specifically, it's difficult to do that tie-in without knowing, you know, what, you know, with the student, what, what made you have the decision to come to school? You know, it's, you know, it's, it's difficult if, if everybody's doing the same thing and we see different rates. So we'll see what we can do to dig into that data level.
Since you have that in here as a strategy, I'm, I don't even know what the, the right, what you would be looking for, which is why I'm asking the question, but.
Right. And, and, I'm sorry, Dr. Birdsong.
I was just going to add, one evidence-based strategy that we did utilize and is certainly supported by research is to make sure that every child in the building has at least one adult, one adult responsible for that child who we know has been chronically absent. So during the SLI, I reiterated to building principals that they should already know who these children are based on, upon their attendance from last school year. So we should, any of you should be able to go to a school and say, oh, how many children are on your list right now for attendance? They should be able to tell you the specific name of the child, the grade level, and everything else about that child. We know that strategy works, it's supported by research. If that one adult in the building can reach out to the child, you weren't here today, we missed you, what is going on, talking to their parents, that's probably the most effective strategy, is that human touch, knowing that someone cares about you. So I, I know our building principals will continue, continue to utilize that strategy, but even more so next year.
And I really appreciate you bringing that up because that's, you know, if I were just to look at this, that, that piece of it doesn't come across as strongly as you just shared, you know, and it being evidence-based and all that, I think is really important for us to understand that, that the resources that we are budgeting for are being used in that manner. So I think that would be helpful going forward.
We'll build on the reports. Continuous improvement.
Yeah, my apps.
Chair.
Yes, Mr. Jordan.
So I appreciate the report. Just for the record, I had this, had a similar discussion with the state superintendent about chronic absenteeism. What, what I, what I struggle with, so, so our goal is around school accreditation. And then one of the interims that we're looking at is chronic absenteeism rate, not by school, but district-wide. So what, what we're having a conversation around right now is about the overarching chronic absenteeism rate. But because of the references into what's going well as a school-by-school matter, we're having a conversation about school-by-school performance, even though we aren't monitoring chronic absenteeism school-by-school. And then in the conversation we were just having around what's going well, what we're, what the next steps are going to be, we're talking about the adult behavior. And so it's, it remains my position that the work that we're doing around chronic absenteeism is great work, but we are really having a conversation around the behaviors of adults. We're not really having conversations around, you know, a student outcome, what students know and are able, able to do. So somewhere to me in here, maybe the administration may want to consider if we are going to look at this school-by-school, then adding an interim measure for the school-by-school. If the aggregate of chronic absenteeism across the board isn't really going to tell us much directly how we are reaching 100% of, of accreditation. Does that make sense at all?
So it, it does. I just, I want to clarify from my own knowledge, Mr. Jordan, so, and, and maybe it's just because we're talking about a different measure, but at some points, we said no school-by-school. But on this one, if we're, we're looking at that accreditation level, the school-by-school now is something that would be more important to look at.
Well, what I'm, so the board, the board set this goal, the superintendent administration set the interim goals. In theory, the, the accomplishment of the interim measures over time will lead to the achievement of the goal over time. So what we are discussing right now is the percentage of students who are chronically absent will decrease. And so our, our, the strategy is, is that as the student, the percentage of students who are chronically absent in normal public schools decreases, there's going to be some direct correlation or some direct connectivity to school accreditation, to be 100% of the schools being accredited. But because the goal says 100% of the schools will be accredited, and because chronic absenteeism differs school-by-school, I'm saying that something that the administration may want to consider, because you all set the interim, we don't set those, okay?
Yeah, yeah.
Personally, and Ms. Basine talk about this all the time, I think the whole goal should go away because it's not really measuring student outcomes.
That's what I was saying.
But we, but we've, we've had that debate and we agreed to get here. So, but since it's here, somewhere in here, I think that if there is student performance data that drives school accreditation, somewhere here, I just think we need, that's what I think we should be talking about. Because, because in other, other than that, we're really talking about, you know, what the adults are doing. We're, we're kind of measuring what the adults are doing. We're not really looking at, although we are potentially in other interims, we are looking at our students reading on grade level, our students in the, in the fifth goal, you know, taking these higher-level courses that would ultimately lead to graduation and so forth. I just raise the, raising it for consideration because, one, when I'm looking at the report itself, yeah, I still think we're missing, are we on track or not? And so if we are on track, then I think that should still be, be referenced. And if we're going to describe what's going well is how attendance is being affected school by school, then maybe that should just be a, a separate thing to, to measure. So I don't have an answer for it, I'm just raising what I'm challenged by as I try to decipher the strategies around the report itself and whether or not we're really monitoring something that if we were to achieve our, our interim measures, is that directly going to result in school accreditation? We know indirectly, because we, obviously, children in school, so when they're being taught, being taught well, aligned to the curriculum, all that should produce what we're talking about. But just being in school by itself.
So that does affect accreditation in our current accreditation system?
In the system, yes.
Correct. So in, in the fi, the next accreditation system hasn't been finalized yet.
Almost.
Very close. We start school in a week and it's still not quite there. But I think, Mr. Jordan, I understand, I understand your, your dilemma on this one, but I think when we put this in place, knowing if we're looking at the school-division level data, that we're going to, you're not going to see drops in the division-level data unless you're seeing them across the division. Maybe you'd have a spike at one school or two schools, but we were focusing then on the school-level data. And by having this as one of the measures, we truly saw a, a decrease in the amount of schools who would lose accreditation because of attendance because of this. And, and we didn't report it school-by-school, we didn't get in that depth here. We looked at it that way because that's how, you know, you guys know, we looked down at the data all the way down to the student level. If we took the time to report all that all the time, we wouldn't get anything done. But I also understand your dilemma of saying, if we're doing that, how do we report on that? But I think when the new accreditation system comes out, we might have to look at some of these measures, you know, interim measures to, to meet the goals different, differently as well.
Yeah, and, and I appreciate that. No, I was trying to unsuccessfully communicate also to the state superintendent, frankly, to the, to the board is, if you want to hold the school divisions accountable for what students are learning.
Thinking about that.
Have at it. But once, once you start getting into things that the school system is responsible for outside of its direct control, now, now you, you're muddying the system. And that's, that's the point I'm trying to.
I would agree with that 100%. Mr. Jordan.
Absolutely, yeah. Dr. Gabriel and then Ms. Basine.
And if you could just say that like 10 more times.
Saying it 10 times for 10 years.
Because that is the situation that we're in. We are trying to do our best with the academics. We're trying to provide an environment for our students that is warm, accepting, clean, dry, loving, caring, academically rigorous. And then there are all of these other factors now that are piled on public education, the medical, the social, the emotional, the parent, the absenteeism.
Nutrition.
The nutrition, transportation. And all of that is piling in on our budget. And when those things creep in in our budget, guess what we're not able to do? Raises, competitive salaries across the board for all of the individuals. And so to Mr. Jordan's point, it is very hard. I'm saying this to you, but I'm really saying this to all of our viewers and those who are, you know, in tune. It's very us for us to control and to have an impact on factors that we really don't have direct control over. I mean, as a parent myself, there are days when I know my child needs to stay home because of certain things. And I'm going to be the parent and make that decision, but for the state to come in and say, we're going to grade you on that, I know the intention behind it is you want to have as many kids in the seats as possible because if they're not here, they're not learning. But as educators, as the professionals, we understand that. We're going to do the factors that we have control over. So again, I'm just going to hit that point home again. Schools exist for education, and the more that we dilute the purpose of what we're here to do, it makes the job that much more difficult. Not saying it can't be done, and we know that those factors play into it, but it makes it very, very challenging.
Ms. Basine?
I mean, I, I agree with everything that has been said, and I've said it 1,000 times as well. But given that this is what we have here right now in front of us, the last question that I, that I had around it that I didn't ask is, so any of the strategies that are being used that have led to improvements that we are seeing? Of those, what, are we going to see any changes as a result of the expiration of the ESR funds?
No, no, because in the, in the budget, we planned, we planned for any of those activities, and then we were able to even do more when, when the board approved the extra 17.9 million, some of the stuff that we had in there to support that. So we won't see any loss of, of anything that supported the board goals or the strategic plan, you know, with, with ESR funds.
That's good to hear.
I guess I do have just one other question. So as we look at the, the performance that we had last year in terms of the first quarter meeting the, meeting or exceeding the target, and the other three quarters not, forgive me if you've already said that, but is it, what, what does that mean? Folks are excited at the beginning of the year and?
I, I think, Mr. Jordan, I think it also means we were, we were pretty aggressive with our targets. And we've had that discussion before about the target setting. You know, we, we look to go down 3% this year, starting for, starting a percent lower than we were last year. And, you know, just knowing we really wanted emphatically to, to have our students in school, I, I was pleased that we did remain lower than every quarter, you know, report last year. So what we were doing was effective, but I think we were a little overzealous saying we got to 19 to 17, or 19, 18, 17, 16. That, that's a, that was a big, a big jump. And I, I think we've learned, we've learned from that. But we did go in the right direction and we maintained better than what we did last year. I know we had a little jump from quarter one to two, but then we ended the year in the right way. And also, you know, one of the things, and, and I don't have all the full data set in front of me on this, but when the, when the rule was changed where we were allowed to kind of buy back attendance, have students come in and, and have, you know, standards-based lessons taught to them, they were able to get some of their time back. That also helped with that fourth quarter rate.
All right. Some more questions, we can go on to the dropout rates, Dr. Poe.
All right, thank you again. And this one, you know, we're, we're similar. Here, we're looking at the dropout rate. Again, this is connected to goal one, and we were looking to see the decreases as seen on the screen here. Unfortunately, with dropout, we, we faced some challenges this year, and we, we stayed above, above the rates from last year and, and didn't, didn't see the, the decrease that we wanted. As a reminder, though, this data has the possibility of changing up to the beginning of next school year, and you'll see that in some of the, some of the messaging I have in this report as well. Currently, although the dropout rate continued to increase from quarters one to three, we did see that drop from quarter three to quarter four. And the quarter four rate is 0.4% lower than the previous year. So at the very end of the year, we did see a decrease from last year on the dropout rate. And this was the first time this year we saw it improved over the previous year. What's going well, based on the projected data now, two of the high schools are now projected to not be in level three for dropout rate. And if you recall, when we had the school board retreat and the data that we shared with you very early, all five high schools were in the red, projected to be in the red for dropout, which means, you know, when, when we told you there that there were come, some that were really close, and that the principals, the graduation coaches, they have been calling and tracking down students and getting them to re-enroll or finding out they've enrolled elsewhere, to where now two of our high schools are projected to be in the yellow and not the red, so that won't affect their accreditation status, which is very good news. And four of the five high schools are projected to have improved their dropout rates when compared to the previous year's data. What's not going well, we still do have three of the high schools that are in level three or red for the dropout rate currently. So next steps are somewhat similar to the attendance because they, they go hand-in-hand dropout and attendance. So with the, the attendance in MTSS plans, professional development MTSS from the division to the school level still, the attendance challenges and campaigns, the, the funding to support graduation coaches is really big with the dropout rate, so that continued funding. And other staff members to go to the community to meet with students chronically absent or who have dropped out to try, try to bring them in. We still have funding in our local budget to be able to pay outside of school time. We still have funding in our local budget to be able to pay outside of school time for folks like family engagement specialists and others to go to the communities and, and find those students. And then as, Mr. Clanton, as you mentioned on this one, I did put on the slide, or we put on the slide the addition of the senior coordinator to assist with dropout prevention, and of course, attendance, you know, at the earlier levels as well, is a, is a big part of, of the work that we're looking to focus here. And I did wanna mention what Dr. Burtsong mentioned as well, that, you know, she has, you know, talked with principals about wanting their input on the specific job requirements here, so that we can post something that's really good, meaningful and useful to our principals as well.
Okay. Well, you answered his question first.
You go.
You answered my question. I was gonna ask, was the staff members identified who was gonna be the additional staff members going out to assist? And I think you said family engagement specialist?
In some cases, in some cases, we, we pay counselors for extra time. In some cases, we can pay the, the graduation coaches for extra time. If it's outside, if, like, if they're going in the evenings to go knock on doors, we have funding to be able to, to, to pay for that. Even teachers have done it in some instances as well. So anybody who's willing and, and wants to do it, anybody who's formed that relationship too with the family, to be able to support that work.
Okay. That was my question. Mr. Clanton.
You have a chair. Often I get asked this question here, and I just, for clarity, and I guess even for my colleagues here. What is our policy or procedure regarding truancy?
That's a, that's a great question. It's a really, it's pretty complex. Our truancy policy, after a certain number of days, for example, that a child is absent, the school is required to do follow-up communications and document all of that. And so there's, as I recall it, I don't do it daily, but I know, big picture, there was a three-day letter, a five-day letter, a seven-day letter, and then at some point the child gets dropped from enrollment. If they're.
So when do we, do we go to the home? I'm, I'm hearing letters. Do we go to the home at some point in that too?
Oh, absolutely. I mean, that needs to start immediately to be proactive. But what I think is most challenging, Mr. Clanton, is when a child disappears, like literally, when they don't have a forwarding address, and you go to the house and there's nobody there, or a new family there, and you haven't received any information from another school division, then it's, we have to be the FBI and try to locate children. And so that's what we do.
And if, and if I can add to Dr. Burtsong, you know, in talking to some of our graduation coaches and attendance techs, I mean, it, you're talking about they're on Facebook, Instagram, looking for their cousins, looking for whoever they can, calling, reaching out to really, truly try to find them, and, and they'll say, oh, that, you know, he moved to Texas. Well, I don't know. I don't know how to contact him, but I know he moved to Texas. You, you know, it's, it's a difficult task, but it is like the FBI.
And Ms. McMorris, last year was her first year in the role. She has done a phenomenal job of assisting principals in terms of, you know, when there's an address change, and we're trying to, you know, find out, why are you absent every day? Or why are you late every day? And you find out that perhaps the child doesn't live where they say they're living, which then we have conversations about the parents, about moving, making sure that they attend the school that they should be attending, so transportation is provided, so that no longer becomes an issue. But it takes a, a lot of great investigative skills to be able to track down our children when they just disappear.
Definitely. Well, I, I appreciate that, because I, I think there's a misconception and there's no more out there sometimes, that the division isn't doing things to try to keep students in school. And so I ask that question.
We want our children.
I know that, but you know, just like Dr. Gabriel said, for the eyes that are watching and maybe re-watching this at midnight, you know, I'm telling you, people watch these meetings all the time. Just, it's good to know and to give that a little bit more context around what's happening and that. And in some situations, that may happen. Because I'm quite sure we lost a lot of students during COVID, when people were all different places and things like that. So, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Ms. Basin?
Yeah, so, I mean, my comment is, we're engaging in this continuous improvement process of, you know, reporting this. Again, you know, strategies that led to improvement and how we know that those were effective, and same with what didn't work, I think is.
And I can answer that to, to some, to some regard on this, Ms. Basin, is really, the strategy with, where, where we saw the most effectiveness was the, just the tracking down and, and being able to search for students. And also the flexibility in letting students know, you know, whatever it takes, you know, will, will help you graduate, you know, because a lot of the dropout is also around students who haven't earned enough credits, and then they're 16, 17, going on 18 years old, and, you know, what can we do to support them in their learning to make up credits where they had failed, so you can do it quicker? And to make sure that they can see that light at the end of the tunnel. Those are the strategies that are most effective, to get the students back in the door.
So, and that, to that point, so those strategies that were used to get them through the door, you know, we just had summer school graduation a couple of weeks ago, which I'm sure, you know, impacted, probably included some of the students that might have been in that, in those categories. So I think it'd be good for us to know what that is, because I think we all agree that we want to accelerate whatever is working, and so, and expand, and whatever we need to do, so.
Now, I do think, not to interrupt, but I do think with the addition of the position, that's really a big part of what that's for, is to really focus on the successes and sharing those successes, and making sure that's what's getting, getting driven home, and making sure that we're doing that across all of our schools.
All of our schools. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Jordan?
Thank you. Good. Get you to take me back to my, you, you all were in at the retreat that have a special room. So, I wanna get you to take me back to the special room again. Can you just remind, remind me again the, the definition of dropout as it relates, or dropout rate as relates to the cohort? Our, our goal is the percentage of students within the 23, 20, 24 graduation cohort who drop out of school will decrease. So dropout means?
Exactly what it sounds like. We, we, they, they're not coming anymore, they haven't transferred to another school, they, you know, they, they're, they're, they have, we've lost them, and we have no record of them going anywhere else to continue their education.
Right. And so when we say the cohort, there's some number.
So the cohort means, so, and I, I, I won't be able to get into the direct calculations with you on how this works.
No, it's fine.
However, as, as, as a picture, if you have 1,000 students who start ninth grade together, and then you have 900 students who finish, then you had a 10% dropout rate.
Okay.
Something, to simplify it to that effect, because it's cohort-based, that they follow each other through.
Right. And then in our, so in our 2021, 2022 rate actuals, we had quarter one was 6.5%. Then the next year, we had 11%, and our target last year was 10% in that first quarter, and then the actual was 12.5%.
Correct.
And then I recall, as we were discussing, the targets for 23, 24 by quarter, there was reasoning behind the 10, the 9.5, the 9, and the 8.5. Then ultimately, so because we're dealing with the graduation cohort, that's why we tie it directly to high schools.
Correct.
In this, on this particular one.
Correct.
Then earlier you were mentioning that, so at the, at one point, the preliminary accreditation status for each of the high schools was that all of them would be accredited with conditions.
Correct.
But that has shifted now, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
So the, based upon this current data, we are projecting accreditation status for our high schools would be?
Right now, we would have two accredited and three with conditions.
Okay. Two accredited and three with conditions, which then would also change our overarching goal in terms of the number of stu- schools that we have that are accredited. Okay.
And this one has, just like chronic absenteeism, if you miss dropout, even if you're green everywhere else, accredited with conditions. Just like chronic absenteeism, you're green everywhere else, accredited with conditions.
And then in the, lastly, in the conversation that you were having with Ms. Basin about the students that we find that need to do credit recovery, whatever, whatever those things are, those are the things that are about what students know and are able to do.
Correct.
And so, just as I was saying in the previous one, maybe somehow that should get elevated to something that we pay atten- I don't know if that's something that happens throughout the year, but if some, if a student starts out in, I could start to say September and August, and we know that where they are credit-wise or class-wise puts them in the early warning, and puts them in the warning system in terms of being able to finish by the end of the year, maybe that's something we should be considering, that we're progress monitoring versus the, the first quarter dropout trend. You don't have to answer, I'm just, I'm just.
So I, no, I, I just, again, I wanna clarify, so at, at the school level, I guarantee you, principals track that.
Yeah.
Ninth, 10th, 11th, 12th grade.
Right, right.
They know. Again.
The board level.
Right. Like, like Dr. Burtsong said, you can walk into a school and say, who's at risk of not graduating in ninth grade with their cohort?
Yes.
I can tell you.
Yes.
So the difficulty would be, I think, trying to bring that to board level, because it is so granular.
Okay.
When we look at this. I mean, we could look, again, broadly about credit recovery courses, but that changes so much more.
Okay.
And then overarching, you know, and we talked about the interim measures to start with, we talked about, you know, it's, it's more global level of what we're looking at. You know, I, I feel that's really granular, Mr. Jordan, to look at the, that, because when we talk credit recovery, it changes every year based off needs. And, and to be able to say, well, this year we wanna make sure we have an increase in credit recovery, well, we might have a decrease in failure rate, so you can't have an increase in credit recovery anymore.
Yeah. I wasn't so, you know, like I said, I'm brainstorming. I guess what I was thinking was, if we, if we know at the beginning of the year, at the beginning of the cycle, the number of students who need to, who are so many, behind, that are behind, whatever, whatever the definition of behind what is.
Not on track.
Not on track.
Yeah.
And then we were measuring each quarter, the number of children who are, that are not on track, that are decreasing from quarter to quarter. What would that tell us about what the students are learning versus whether or not they are dropping out or not? That's, that was where I was trying.
So I would, I would see that similar to the interim measures that we have for Goal 5.
Okay.
And we could do something similar to that, to where it, instead of getting the courses to get an advanced studies diploma, we're looking at the courses that you need to go from ninth to 10th grade.
Right.
From 10th to 11th grade. And we could track it something like that differently. We'd have to research and see if that would really make a difference.
And at the end of the day, what I'm, what I'm really trying to better get a sense of for the board conversation is, like I was saying earlier, what is it that we are monitoring from a board level about what the students are doing that ties to or correlates to their ultimate graduation cohort success as relates to the accreditation goal that, that we've established? So.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree with that. I have one thought that just came up as, do you anticipate seeing any changes with how we even define what a graduation cohort is, or what that looks like, especially with dual enrollment? You know, I, I know students are, some graduating with, you're, you know, trying to.
So I, I, you know, last I looked and last I talked to Ms. McGarrett, and, you know, you guys know Ms. McGarrett from ARA, and she is very closely tied to what's, you know, with the new accountability system, so I stay pretty closely tied to it as well. And right now, they're talking about graduation rates differently than what they do right now.
Okay.
Until we have a finalized approach of what the accreditation system's gonna look like, you know, they may go full GCI, you know, graduation completion index, which is a total different calculation.
There is.
So, you know, until we know that, I just can't answer the question.
Okay. I was just, I was just curious what you were hearing. Okay. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Is that all?
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Pol.
I think I get to stay with you for the next one, Donna.
Mm-hmm. You're next.
But the calendar?
No.
The monitoring calendar?
No. Oh. You moved it. Oh, they moved it. You're right.
They moved it.
That is wrong.
Oh, I got it. Thanks. I appreciate it.
Flexible.
So just a brief, brief overview, and then I'll, I'll turn it back over to you guys. So at the retreat, we talked about continuing to keep everything on here so that we have a good vision of it, but we did create the column with the school board goals and what presentations would be going on each month, and then the reports for the strategic plan that would be going on. And then for the evaluations and others, stayed the same. The only other I have on here is, each year, in, in November, we do the equity report, just so you know that that'll be coming your way in November. But this way, I think it's a little cleaner. It was a, a great suggestion at the board retreat, and now it, you know, it just lists out what we're gonna have. And looking at it on screen, I think I need to darken the shading, so you can really see month by month a little bit cleaner on this, but that, that was the suggestion made, and I'll turn it over for you guys to make more suggestions or whatever you want to do.
Okay. So you see the updated, thank you, Dr. Pol.
My pleasure.
Around the conversation we had at the retreat. So this is the, the final product that is presented in front of us. So any questions or comments around the school board monitoring report?
And we, by the way, we are up to date with what we presented today. We're.
Yes.
Whether we've accepted the monitoring calendar or not, we are up to date through August, what we've presented to you guys.
Yep.
Mr. Jordan?
Yes.
All right.
Okay. First, first I have a suggestion, then I have some clarifying questions. So I appreciate the work. So where we have bold goal, board goals with the two, three, and four, I think we should amplify what the goal is. If somebody were to pick this up and was trying to see what we were actually going to be monitoring, unless they know somehow what Board Goal 2 is and, and the measure is, it would not help them. So I think we should, so for example, if Board Goal 1 is 100% accreditation, then we should have some reference to that. If interim measure 1 is chronic absenteeism, then we should amplify that rather than just having the, the variable or the placeholder.
So just for fun, Mr. Jordan, I had that on the first one that I presented to you guys. I had it all spelled out.
I know, I did too.
Okay.
Yeah. No, I did too. I, I went back and looked at it all.
I couldn't make it fit on this one, but I, it'll just be bigger.
Yeah. I mean, I just, you know, you can use, whatever it is. Ultimately, the whole purpose of this monitoring calendar.
We appreciate it.
Is to really assist the board to know what to expect.
Sure.
And unless the board is going to memorize all this stuff, which I know the board is gonna do, then it doesn't, it doesn't really help. And in terms of communicating to the extent that we are to the public what we are doing, I think that would be, that would be helpful.
Do you like the format that it was previously presented to the board?
I have to go back and look at it, but I just, I just, I do remember we had some words there that gave some amplification.
Well, I'm, I'm just looking at the, the, the previous one, and for, for example, we had like Goal 3, reading, black students, all grade levels. Goal 2, third grade reading, all.
So within the monitoring calendar.
Within the monitoring calendar. So I think that's.
I can make that.
Yeah, what he's referring to.
And then my.
If I may, just a clarifying question. Would that be helpful to have it abbreviated like that, or just to have like an addendum on the back with all of the, the goals and interim measures listed?
I think it's just show right in the, right on the.
Okay. Then we'll do that version, like to the original.
So we can see that. And then, so in August, we have two meetings. So what we just did today was Board Goal 1, Board Goal 1. So what we just did today was board goal one, board goal one, interim measure one, interim measure two.
Correct.
So the chart as- the calendar as it's currently presented then suggests that at the next meeting, we will do no monitoring. Is that correct?
Correct. It's- it's- so my- my indication right now is- is that our work sessions are the first board meeting. So my plan right now is those, every month right now would be the first board meeting unless there's different direction given to the administration.
Thank you. So, so this is the-
We want to stay within-
This is the clarity that I think the board has to provide. So we have talked about, um, one of their board non-negotiables is spending 50%, no- trying to get to the point where you're spending no less than 50% of our monthly meeting time, public monthly meeting time, on, uh, student outcomes. And so when I worked on the version that I worked on before, I was anticipating that the board was going to change our behavior and so that we were going to be spending time twice a month on monitoring student progress. And in the process of doing that, spending less time, uh, monitoring and managing the administration. So what this current, um, calendar has is not that. What the current calendar has, as Dr. Poehl just said, is he's operating from the perspective that at the work session, we'll monitor. And at the second meeting or third meeting, any other meetings that we have during the month, we're going to be doing what we currently do. And so what I think the board has said that we're going to do is change our behavior and change our agendas. Because if we calculate that we have two and a half hours at the first meeting and of public time, let's just say for the sake of argument, two and a half hours at the second meeting, we won't reach our goal unless we spend all of our time monitoring at a work session. And based upon the number of goals and interim measures that we have, we won't get there either. So if you go to September, we would be trying to do three-
Three.
-monitoring reports at the September work session where typically you try to set aside 45 minutes for a monitoring report. I mean, there's more to it than what we are currently doing. So I'm advocating to the board again that- that we consider our, uh, agendas and our work such that we are monitoring twice a month, which then gets us closer to being able to do all of the progress monitoring that we need to do in a year based upon the goals that we set and the interims that the administration has provided us.
Okay, so let me- let me say this. So for example, September, board goal five, interim measure one, two, and three. So if we were to set aside the first two interim one, one and two for the work session and board goal five interim three for the business meeting? Okay.
I mean, we could, for- as an example.
As an example, and same as October. And it- as I look ahead of November, I'm- I'm- my brain is saying board goal one, measure one, board goal one, measure two would be for the work session and the other two would be for the business meeting. Okay. And-
Instead of trying to do four monitoring reports in one month?
At one time, yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
One meeting and-
So what I need to hear, because I- I heard that because how- because remember, our setup in the business meeting is totally different from us sitting and we can see each other, have convers- conversations. So I just want to make sure when we're talking about business meeting, we're in a totally different setting. It's, you know, I'm just- I'm just putting that out there.
Yeah, that's where my, I'm trying to-
Your brain is, Dr. Mark.
And I- and I totally understand, um, what Mr. Jordan is, um, trying to say and put forth. In theory, I mean, because there are some school boards that only meet once a month.
Yep.
We have, and for longstanding, have a work session, which really should be like, we're here to provide the opportunity for the board to take deep dives, to be focused on those things, to be able to answer those questions. And then when we come together for a formal business meeting, is the time that we take the action. Like today, we had to do some personnel stuff because we know we always have to do that during the summer because we're constantly hiring folks in. I don't know if I'm necessarily going to say that I- I'm in total agreeance that we need to be looking at a monitoring schedule during the business meeting. I think that we need to get ourselves in a posture, when we're here in work session, that we can train ourselves to be focused and hyper-focused during work sessions to do those things. And then also, do all of these require us to actually have a formal conversation around? I'm just saying that. Or is it a report that's given to the board and that the board comes back to have additional follow-up for monitoring? I- I'm just putting it out there. But my, I would like to see us not use the- the time that should be used for formal action, the board taking action on things, for doing what I consider to be workshop kind of type of things there. And if we can move that, not in- in a business meeting, but let's- how we can structure this work session to go through all those things and just determine whether or not some of those things are reports and not necessarily a full-fledged out getting a staff member here unless there's some follow-up or something that's required and that. That would just be my opposing, not- not saying that your idea is wrong, but I'm- I'm just thinking.
Back to you.
Okay, I saw Dr. Martin, then Ms. Basine.
Then Mr. Jordan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do agree, I think that our work sessions should be for this type of discussion and our business meetings should be for action items. And also, um, we have recently extended the, um, the time in which we receive the reports. So we rece- we have almost two weeks is what we're working toward, right? To have- to have that time to ask questions about the reports. And my, and- and also, my next point is that if we're splitting them up and then we're having some discussion here and then some discussion on the dais, then that discussion we're having on the dais would have to wait another month for, you know, if there's any actionable items to that. It just, um, I- I just think it throws us a little off kilter as far as, um, as our calendars and our- our meetings. But also, I- I really like this more informal discussion here. I would not feel very comfortable doing that on the dais. Especially in- in the nature of what that business meeting is- is designed for.
Ms. Basine?
So I- I really appreciate this conversation and it's a much, much needed one. And, you know, I've- I've struggled with the- the thought of, um, you know, what we're talking about here as well and have had, shared that thought over the years. But, you know, I think as we've talked about over the last, this most recent year is that we have- we have to make some changes to our own behavior and- and how we structure our meetings around our students. And if we're going to do that and achieve that, we have to concede to, you know, abandoning the status quo, abandoning doing things the way we've always done it. And while I don't want our business meetings to be used to have discussions on an item that were first introduced to us at that moment and then have to take action on it, that, you know, is different. But for us to be focused on progress monitoring where we're not necessarily taking action on anything but having discussion about what our students know and can do, I think that to me is, it's a- it's a huge shift. So I understand, you know, where there's some reluctance. But I think it's a shift that if we are truly going or truly committed to seeing progress and having the time to understand, like, the strategies that are working, not working, what our students know and can do, then we- I think we really need to- to put that attention in those two meetings around progress monitoring. That's just my- my two cents. And, oh, let me, can I, just one- one more thing, one thought. So the other thing is, I know another thought that might be coming through your mind is that, okay, so now our meetings will be longer, our meetings will be, you know, whatever it is. But I think we need to look at the agenda of our business meeting overall and see what things that are on there that don't need to be, uh, that aren't student outcomes focused, that we can take off so that we can have this monitoring discussion. So just wanted to put that.
Jordan?
So I will, um, so it's my deja vu moment. So we- we had this discussion before.
That was an early discussion.
Huh?
I said that was an early discussion.
No.
Just give it some context. You said you deja vu.
I'm just saying, we've- we've- we've had this conversation before about what the board wanted to focus. We've had the conversation Dr. Gabriel was mentioning earlier about, you know, what we're even here for. And for years, um, Norfolk Public School and the board found ways of doing workshops around that round table, in that boardroom, uh, prior to going into closed sessions. So having a workshop at the round table is- is doable. The, what we spend our time on in our business meeting, we can still have a shortened business meeting. It can, um, cause us to put more things on consent. We can decide we don't need to have a monthly financial report that we spend a whole lot of time on, uh, myself included. I'm just saying. No, I'm just, we've- 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 we've had this conversation before and every time I say it, then Dr. Birdsong laughed, but she'd say, are you sure, Mr. Jordan? No, it's okay. I think it- it is- it is funny, if you think about it. If you think about, if this board says that we're going to focus on student achievement and we've gone through, we've- we talked about it with all this stuff, what is it that we are willing to do differently to put the focus on what we say we value the most? And if what we value the most is, um, you know, me asking questions that the- I'm saying, I don't feel, I would rather ask, be able to spend time knowing whether or not, more time on our- our students on grade level than worrying about the monthly financial report. I'm willing to spend, the- the only thing that we have on our business meeting that may come to us from time to time for, uh, for discussion, you know, could be some policies that we- that we pull off. But if we say that we want to be student outcome focused, then either we are going to be or we aren't. That doesn't stop action from taking place. It may force us to put more things on consent than we've currently put on consent. It may force us to, um, not put some things in the discussion agenda that we would normally have. But nothing says that outside of, uh, our commitment to providing the public the opportunity to address the board, there's nothing that says that we'd have to have two, three things under discussion and decision that takes an hour and a half. That's our choice. So what- what I'm raising to you from the monitoring calendar, if we don't do that, we are not going to get through, um, our progress monitoring in, with the number of goals, interim goals that we have in the time that we have allotted for a work session. So you're either going to make the work session longer, which is going to make us less focused because we're going to get tired trying to go through the monitoring report, or we make these shifts that we have agreed for two, three years, that we're going to make these shifts and then when it comes time to make the shift, we don't make the shift. So here we are at another year, getting ready to start another school year. We know where our students are academically and we know what the board says that it wants to prioritize. And- and so I just raised that in the context of the monitoring calendar because when I read it, that's what I thought I was seeing, which is different from the framework that, uh, what y'all- what are y'all doing?
Go ahead, keep talking.
Oh, which is different from the- the monitoring framework that we agreed we were going to implement, so.
So, Madam Chair, um, I- I agree that we should look at some things that are there, but I'd like to also remind my colleagues, we are a board that has fiduciary responsibility, has legal obligations and things. A lot of times, when I just went back to look at our meeting last month, you know, when we look at certain reports and things that we get in here, we put a lot of stuff in consent. You're right, we could move some additional things to consent. I think if we get to that two weeks of getting reports ahead of time and board members follow through and answer whatever necessary questions so that we don't have to wait to get here to the meeting and extend it, we can move those things to consent and we can get all of that stuff done. But I- I- I think that it's something we can definitely continue to massage there. I, again, work sessions are just that, work sessions, get work done. Business meeting, take care of that- that work there. With that being said though, Madam Chair, we are past the 6:30 hour. And so I'd like to extend our time by 15 more minutes so we can complete what we have here without objection because we have the agenda timed, so we're supposed to technically adjourn at 6:30.
Okay, so the time now is 6:39. And so what I'm hearing for the monitoring calendar, and I hear everyone, is that we're going to work to try to get this, or as far as, um-
Just identifying the goals, yeah, identifying the goals and the interim measures as was done previously.
Oh, yes, I had that part. I'm- I'm just talking about the two meetings.
Yeah.
Like, for example, I'm looking at the- the, um, the business meeting. For example, for September, again, we have three, um, monitoring goals. And we said we were going to monitor at least two at each meeting. We have three. So am I hearing the board saying that they want to put the third monitoring? And they're all board goal five to one for the business meeting for September?
No.
Not in work session.
No, work session, we have to discipline ourselves to get through the material.
That's what I need to, yep.
But I think the discipline is around what we choose to focus our meeting time on is where- is where the discipline really comes in. And so in our business meeting-
We have to watch ourselves on our- on the meeting. We have to look, we have to mind our communication, our questions, how much we speak. Um, it's both, and I'm sorry to interrupt, but it is- it is both.
So I- I want to remind the board that, uh, a year ago, we agreed that we were going to make these shifts. Then in March, I believe it was, we agreed again. And now here we are in August, now disagreeing about what we already agreed we were going to do. And so it- it is, um, this is our, this belongs on the board. This is our behavior change that we say that we want. And then when it comes time to do it, then we come up with reasons not to do it that have absolutely nothing to do with student outcomes. So either- either we are committed to it, um, or we're not. But if we're going to go down this path based upon this version of the calendar and say that we are only going to progress monitor at a work session, then we need to change, we need- we need to change our, the amount of time that we have allotted at a work session because we are not willing to make adjustments to our second meeting that we just call the business meeting, I don't care what you call it. But at the end of the day, um, we're either going to be student outcome focused as we've agreed as a board, in our non-negotiables as a board, and what we've said to the superintendent, or- or we stay down the path that we are. But what the research shows is that what, where the board puts its focus and time is what gets done. And so if the board spends its focus, its ti- in time on monitoring student achievement, student achievement will get done. If the board spends its time on managing the district or managing the superintendent, that's what will get done. And our data and what we've heard from our public suggests that our board needs to commit itself and prioritize around monitoring student achievement, which we all have already agreed to, uh, multiple times.
Again, I agree on the mon- Again, I agree on the monitoring piece. This is a work session. The public is not allowed to speak during the work session for a specific reason. It's an opportunity for the board members to engage with each other. During the business meeting, we afford the public an opportunity to address the board before we take action.
Seven o'clock.
Work sessions, we don't take action. Yep, but, you know, we could take it back. I mean, this board used to meet in the middle of the day, you know, way before my time. So we did not allow opportunity for the board to be here. But we can, I, I, I just can't allow this generalization to go on the respect of, of the board. Work sessions are an opportunity for us to discuss and to have that open discussion, Miss Seating, that you always talk about, we need to have, to do that, so that we discipline ourselves to get to the business meeting, and the administration has the time to hear from the board, take clear direction, and give us recommendations to take action on. That's the business meeting. Further also, this particular calendar, I know that you worked hard on bringing it to us, but we had a different calendar that we were working on as a board, if I'm not mistaken, correct?
No.
Before, we did not, we had a different monitor calendar before you gave another?
No, I gave the initial, I did the initial.
Transfer, but we had something different. I, 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 this idea that we were going, I, I, I agree that we can move some things to consent and so forth there. But I don't think the board taking action and deciding that we want to spend more time in work session to have this type of format, and then in a business meeting to be more disciplined to take action, is us reversing anything. I disagree on that respect. I think that we have an opportunity to go back, be disciplined in the work session so that we can have these discussions. Because there's a difference between this and the public meeting. Because the public, this is their opportunity to address the board, opportunity for us to take action. And I know that there's a lot of different models that are out there, but governance, which we've looked at it for a lot of times, has been that. So I, I just disagree in that respect. It's not something I'm going to die on over there, but I'm just saying, I, I, I just don't like the generalization that we're backtracking, and I don't think so. I think that the board is making a decision. I mean, if there's three, three on something, then we keep going where we are. But this is the time we're supposed to really have those conversations. We can't do that up there like this.
I, you, you, if I may, Madam Chair?
Y'all may for-
Yeah, I gave you- I'm not, uh, nobody say anything about doing anything up there. I don't want to have a monitoring session on the dais.
So we will meet. Okay, go ahead, I'm, I'm going to cut you off.
School, school boards meet, the school boards have a meeting to do the business of the board in the public. The school board does not meet to have a meeting for the public. That's just basic.
But there's a difference in comment. Do we, is the public speaking today?
Let me, let me finish. The board chooses, which I support, the board chooses to provide the public the opportunity to address its body. We do that at seven o'clock. There's nothing that stops this board at four o'clock, from four o'clock to four, five thirty, being able to have a session, a workshop, where we can do a progress monitoring. And then from five thirty to seven o'clock, do whatever our closed session business is. And at seven o'clock, come in and take whatever action the board wants to take.
So you said, what time to start?
Four o'clock.
At our regular time.
Same time we always do.
Just use- We have a workshop session.
First hour.
First hour, hour and a half for a monitoring session.
For monitoring.
For focusing on students.
In this room, but in-
Wherever we do it.
Yeah, well, I, because I'm, 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 I'm a little biased. This takes work to set up this room for any kind of meeting. So the transition time on a, for a business meeting is a lot. I mean, setting up chairs, setting up tables, and all these things that Ms. Tanner, um, and everything, the setup for a business meeting is, is timely, so.
We could, we can do it in there.
Right, that's why I said, so if, if the board is saying monitor, um, uh, a board goal, the workshop would be in the superintendent's conference room versus this room, because this room would be set up for a business meeting.
Yeah, whatever logistically makes sense, but the point is, is that we set up time during that business meeting that doesn't have to be up there, but it's time that we can focus on our students. Dr. Martin?
The space for the people who are in here is very limited in there.
That is, definitely.
It, it gets very crowded.
But I heard three, to keep it, work session, business, so, and then I heard two. So, Madam Chair, where you, where you at?
I am, I can see both ways. My angst was monitoring, uh, monitor in this room. I don't think this room is, in the business meeting, um, is to do it. I can see we're allocating an hour before we go into closed session to monitoring, um, a report in the, um, workshop. Um, and I can see both ways, um.
Can, can I also add, so what about if we, just say, remember this way.
I'm just trying to follow.
What about even if we had at four o'clock, we had opportunities? And I think in the past, they used to have like the, the meals or something like that with, with GAC and, and CAC and some of those other things, if we allocated that first hour, not just monitoring, but other things that are student-focused in having those opportunities? Even if we have, uh, with our work session, I, I would be open to that, because we don't have that opportunity. Uh, and, and, you know, we get a letter and things like that, but we don't have that formal opportunity throughout the year to do that. So maybe that four, that hour, hour and a half is monitoring if we need it, because we got three that month. Or maybe it's a time that we use it and, and, and meet with some of the, um, board committees.
And so when we come in this room for the business meeting strictly for-
Yeah, and, but we do it in, in that smaller room.
I, I just think we need to be really intentional about what we're doing. And so we're going to be focused on student outcome, monitoring their progress. And while I don't disagree with the chat and choose, or whatever, that to me is a separate thing, that we just have to be committed every, for every meeting, that we are going to focus on at least one interim measure or two, depending on how it breaks down. But we are spending time at each meeting, monitoring our progress. I mean, it's a big shift, but the logistics of how we do it is, you know, all, other conversation. But where our commitment is, is what matters.
Well, I, I do hear that, um, that the business meeting is not the, the right setup to do that.
Up there.
Right.
Right, but not the meeting itself.
Right.
Right. So we can spend time during the meeting in there, doing the workshop.
So, but with that saying, no additional time, it's just allocating maybe an hour prior to closed session to progress monitoring. Is that what I'm hearing?
At least.
I tried to offer a compromise, but I still think it's, it's three, three, so.
What is it, three, three? What are you counting?
Okay, well.
Oh, 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 oh.
Six fifty-one, and we, we really have to move on.
But we have to, can we, can we decide, I mean, we need to, well, or is this going to come back for a vote? When we vote, I mean?
Well, our next, we're done with, uh, monitoring for August, according to our, our, so the next one will be really effective, will affect September maybe.
So, this is the, this, this was my, my rub. So we said we were going to get stuff two weeks ahead of time. We didn't, we didn't accomplish that. We then get the monitoring count, what? I'm saying from the, what the board is, it's not, it's not an indictment of anything. I'm just reciting for the board what the board has to do. It's not, okay?
I thought you said you didn't receive materials from, I was assuming the administration on time.
What we said was, coming into this month, we would get things fourteen days ahead of time. When the, when the, when the agenda came out, it wasn't fourteen days ahead, it was the regular time ahead.
Yeah, because of the agenda. So we, yes, we provide materials when we have an agenda.
I'm not.
Since we just had agenda planning, so.
And I think where the, the mix-up is to, um, our last agenda planning meeting was in June, right? And so, yeah, we just had our first next agenda, we just had our agenda planning meeting on Monday. So there's a very, there was a very large gap between June and Monday, August fifth, right?
I mean, also, agenda planning is planning out, right?
Right, right.
Back in April, May, whenever it was, we agreed we were going to make this shift, that we would get materials two weeks ahead of time. And we, we all talked about it.
Right.
We said it was going to start in July, right? This is August.
And we also said that we were going to try to, um, kind of get, um, our, want to say Dr. Burson, Dr. Burson?
No, I was just going to say, I think the point she's trying to make, we're trying to make, is the administration can't provide items for the school board work session if we don't have an agenda. When the agenda is made, then we can provide the materials. We're, we're just not saying, oh, we think the board might want to discuss this and that and the other. We have to wait until we have an agenda.
That's true, right.
Yep, so they, the agenda wasn't planned out that far in advance.
If you haven't received materials two weeks in advance, it's because there was no agenda to provide materials fourteen days in advance.
They didn't know that we were doing goal one. So, so here's the thing, we keep getting, because in the interest of time, we say, stop here, let's do this. We have to get this monitoring calendar done, so that the administration knows now, in November, goal one, interim measure one, two, you know, is going to be what we're going to get November fifth, whatever, or, or six.
The monitoring calendar is done all the way to twenty twenty?
I know it's done all the way, but to adopt it and to agree that we're, are we monitoring in, over two meetings? One meeting, that matters, so that they can, they know what the agenda is. So you all know what the agenda is, and so that they can post to what we've agreed to the two weeks prior.
Three people said one meeting.
Well, I, I'm just saying, we have to, we-
But that's what I'm saying, three people have said one meeting, two have said over two. So we just need to get, Madam Chair, where we at?
Yeah, we're, we're, yeah, three, we're six, we're six people, six board members. And, um, I hear Mr. Clanton, Dr. Martin, and Gabriel, one meeting. So, um.
So we're saying that, I mean.
Just so I'm clear, so the, the will of the board, that the board agreed to before, was to have a monitoring calendar where we knew, at least I thought we knew, that we were going to be progress monitoring over two meetings. But now today, we're saying we are going, we're changing that, and, well, at least right now, half the board wants to do something.
Will of the board, half the board.
Well, half, half the means the motion would fail, right?
What I heard was, what I heard was, the board wants to become as focused on student outcomes as possible. And if that means altering the way that we formulate our business meeting, pulling some things out, injecting some things in, then that is an option. On the agenda for the work session, if we need to focus, the goal is to not overwhelm the agenda with multiple goals, but if that is where the focus and the attention needs to be, then that's where the focus and the attention needs to be. And if crisis plans need to be a report only, and you submit questions to the superintendent and the administration, then that is how it is to be. So I don't, I don't want the assumption to be that there was an agreement that we split it half and half. I remember having that discussion, but I don't remember us coming to that agreement. What I know that we said we wanted to do was to be very purposeful and student outcomes-driven with both the work session agenda and the business meeting agenda. And I think that we can get there, I know we can get there, um, but right now we are three and three, and so it stays how it is. And then what we can do is go back during agenda planning and talk with the administration, figure out, okay, let's scenario play out if we have a workshop in December, for example. How does that look with, with these items that we have on the agenda? I, I, I think we can do that. But right now, we're three and three, and I, and I think that we can still be student outcomes-focused, but it doesn't have to mean that that means that we split things half in the workshop and half in the, uh, business meeting. That's what I, that's what I took it to be.
I will, uh, end with this. One of, one of the recommendations that came out of our training was that we, in each meeting, with identifying what we agreed to in a meeting. So offline, offline, I'm just going to share back with the board what the board agreed to, and why it has taken the board a year to come up with a monitoring calendar. And I'm not, I don't really care if we, how we split it up. But I'm just saying that the intent was to, um, get us to do what we said we would do with the time that we have available, with the number of goals, interim measures that we have. And so at the end of the day, if we want to achieve what we say we want to achieve and what we've agreed to, we've got to find a way of being clear on what we're doing, what we've agreed to, and then execute it. Uh, because the, um, what we do as a board sets the tone for everybody else. And if it takes us a year to just come up with a calendar, that's on us.
This sounds like further discussion? All right, Dr. Burson, we, we have the district crisis, crisis plans, let's-
So in light of that, Madam Chair, and I'd just like to ask my colleagues, does anybody have any questions on the crisis?
That's where I was going with Dr. Burson. Um, the district crisis plans for each school are in board docs. Does anyone have any questions around those crisis plans? Because they will be on, um, the consent agenda in two weeks. Is there any?
No questions.
No questions.
No, good.
And if, if you, okay.
So you're not going to-
I, I would like to introduce you just so.
Yeah, well, okay. How you doing?
So, um, this evening, Mr. Hughes, he is serving as our public safety and security director. He is doing a phenomenal job. Um, the building principals have given me and the administration very positive feedback about his level of collaboration, um, responsiveness, visibility within our schools, um, his background. You've seen his resume before, so I don't have to go over that again. But I said all of that to say this, we're very pleased with Mr. Hughes and the excellent work that he's doing for our school division. So I again want to welcome him, and this is our illustrious board.
Thank you very much. I do have one, one, one comment. Um, if, uh, I only looked at one crisis plan randomly, and, and that was Booker T. Washington. And if, if you all would go back and take a look at it, I think there's some-
We've corrected that.
We've already, we've already taken a look at it.
We did.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And again, if there's any questions that come up between now and the twenty-first, you can just reach out to Dr. Burson. Also, we have some policies, many of them, um, on the agenda. Dr. Polis coming up, for any board members have any questions?
Encore?
Comments around our policies that are listed in board docs?
I saw a lot of emails ahead of time, so we, I said I saw a lot of emails ahead of time, ain't responding back. So we still got follow-ups.
But I had questions about policies, some of the policies, but, um, I appreciated the response, because there was a couple of them that, um, I didn't see the notation about. They were just for review only, and so I-
Yeah, it's on the bottom, that there, there, I think there are four that are just review only.
Yeah, okay.
And then there was one regulation, the review only, I've always just done the PDF of the policy, because it's just review only.
Okay, okay, it's, it's just, it threw me off, and, but I was going through each of the policies.
It was an easy question to answer, so I was happy.
I know, well, and it was, as soon as I saw it, I was like, oh, there we go, yep, that makes sense. Um, but, or, or, I don't know how you're going to-
I mean, it, I, 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 as I always do, I have a couple I wanted to highlight. But if you just want to go into questions, I'm happy for that.
Maybe you might answer some of the questions if you're going to highlight some of the-
Yeah, because I'm, I'm going, so we, so we did provide a sheet with all of the revisions. So if you have questions based on the, the outline that Dr. Polis put together, that that might be the, the easiest way for, if board members have questions. He did provide a very clear, um-
This, I don't, they don't have this.
Oh, okay.
No, we just have it.
Okay.
That's my, that's my script.
Okay, so, because we always, we get the V S B A, you probably get the same page, and it provides what's being revised.
You probably get the same page, and it provides what's being revised, what's being reviewed, you know, legal changes, all of that.
So, yeah, I'm sorry, they do have that, that's on this right here. The overview of the updates is straight from the V S B A guide. Yeah, so my apologies, Dr. Burson, they have that, yes. They don't have my little bulleted points.
That's right, board docs.
You know, I love my little notes.
That's great.
So. Um, I, I can, let me just, I can race through, you guys have heard me before, policy A G is a brand-new policy, it's, it's Virginia law for literacy plan. We're in full compliance with that policy already, with everything we've done. Policy B D D and B D D L, um, those are for electronic participation for the board and for, um, school board advisory committees, and they start to define caregiver now, and they also say, um, if there's a, a disability reason for a board member not to be able to be present, that they can count as a quorum still, so we just have a quorum meeting, even though it's a virtual meeting. Um, B D D H Z and K D Z, the combined policy, um, it talks about student participation at the board meetings, they added a specific section about that. Um, we allow students to participate at our board meetings and speak, and that says the board may even require them to have an I D now, which we don't require them to have an I D, um, to come in at this point. Um, E B adds language on evacuation planning that includes provisions that seek to maximize, um, um, for those students with mobility impairments. F F, the public dedication of new facilities being deleted, it's just, it's not needed by law, um, so it doesn't need to be a policy. G C A is a new policy on the employment of reading specialists. Again, that ties back to the Virginia Literacy Act. Um, and I'm pleased to announce, because of the support of the board over time, N P S exceeds that requirement by seven point two reading specialists right now.
Oh, wow.
So we're above that level. We, of course, still want to continue to grow, but, you know, it's a different conversation around budget time eventually, but we, we're doing really well in that, and, and they're, they're, I think, I think they're a hundred percent filled right now. Maybe one shy, I can't, I don't, can't remember the staffing, but we are close to having everybody, so we have great support throughout the division. G C C B adds language where a family member of the superintendent may be hired, as long as the superintendent's not involved in the hiring process. So it would be another chief or someone else vetting that, that whole process.
My folks are real educated and hardworking.
That's right. Um, G C L is our policy on professional development, and it adds, uh, uh, specific having P D on the online I E P system. Uh, we use Synergy S E in Norfolk, it mentions Virginia I E P in the policy, but we use Synergy S E, as well as specialty design instruction. Um, again, we already do all this. Uh, last year, we started heavy with, with S D I already, and we're continuing with that this year. In fact, I'm really excited, C and I and special, learning support, special education have combined in our mandatory, they're working together on that to make sure everybody's getting the same message. Um, the following policies, which is exciting, there, uh, have updates related to adding the passport program of study through the Virginia Community College systems, um, and that's through I A, I G B I, I J D, and L E B. Um, that's already i- in our M O U with T C C, um, and Ms. Goshen's done a great job of working on making sure that we have that in our, in our plan as well with our dual-enrollment program. I G A D adds language around boards entering into agreements for post-secondary course credits, credentialing or license attainment, so again, furthering opportunity for our students in the credentialing area. I G A E, I G A F, um, language around program of instruction on, uh, menstrual education and mental health education, that students in grades nine through twelve may also use J R O T C as their physical education requirement, so that really supports our students to give them additional courses. I G B D is the new policy on programs for students with reading deficiencies. Again, this is tied back to Virginia Literacy Act, um, and this policy outlines the requirements for each student's reading plan, if they're required to have one. We've got this in place, as you guys learned during the retreat, um, when Mr. Clark and Ms. Nash, who put Mr. Jordan in his small group alone, um, when they, uh, discussed the literacy plan, they shared with you that we had the student reading plan.
It went straight to my grandson and used it.
See, look at that. Look at that. Um, and then the follow, well, the policies, Ms. Basine, F E G, G A, G A, E, G H, G G B are just for, um, review to meet the five-year requirement. And then J J A C regulation is up there with a few, um, updates to our regulation on, um, concussion, uh, student athlete concussions. Um, and then I, I do want to mention to the board, um, I have finished doing a full review of our policy manual and the V S B A policy manual, and I've been able to pull all of our policies that are no longer in the V S B A policy, as well as our Z policies, so that I can start working with chiefs in different divisions to start reviewing all those policies, to see what we have that are out of date, or that have been retired, and then, of course, working with our school board, our attorneys, to make sure that we're, everything's where it's supposed to be. So that work is also being done at some time.
Appreciate that. That is great.
Thank you.
That's my brief update on policy.
Well, I just have, um, board members reached out to me, I have four policies that they would like to be reviewed.
Okay.
Um, the volunteer policy.
And specifically regarding background checks.
Background checks, specifically, okay.
With the limitations are around that one.
Can I, could I add a piece to that?
Can we get this email, just so we have a record of it? Thank you.
And send me any additional, you said you had something.
Well, yeah.
You have a question?
So are we not going over questions right now?
Yes. If you have a question, but I do want to, it's seven oh nine now, I do want to do a hard stop at seven twenty.
Okay. All right. Well, I'm, I'm gonna, I'll send you all the questions, but I'll bring up the bigger, bigger ones that I have questions around. So I appreciate for policy, um, I G A E, I G A F, um, where N J R O T C, uh, counts as a fulfillment of P E. So can you give, um, I guess for our consideration, you know, I, I think that's a great suggestion, but I also think that there are other things that, um, our students do that are not N J R T, or, oh, R O T C, yeah, R O T C, uh, that, like, for instance, playing sports, some play every season, um, I think that should count as P E. So it's like, where, how are we drawing the line? And, um, I think in terms of equity in sports, too, I think that that could have a big impact, um, as well. So people want to try out for, for teams, will fulfill JV teams, varsity teams, and I think all the benefits, the health benefits that we know that come with that.
So, Ms. Basine, I had to do a little bit more research on it, but I think this was, um.
And I know, that's a legislative.
Yeah, legislative update.
Right, right. And I get that, but since we have the opportunity to, to say that that is a fulfillment, I guess my broader question, because this is something that I've been thinking about for years, is can we, are there other things that we can do? And I'm not saying hold this up to do that, but I just want to put that.
I know, I know specifically legally, in eighth grade, we have some ability to do that, because I know some other divisions that do that.
Yep.
But in ninth and tenth grade, I don't know legally, I, I just, I don't know in my head if we have that, so it's something I can research.
Okay. All right. And then, um, for policy G C L, the professional development, um, which you did highlight, but I guess the, the language in the policy, which I know, V S B A, it says the board annually reviews its professional development program. And oftentimes in these policies, it says the board is doing something that we're not doing. I mean, you know, we, we, the entity is not doing. So I guess, I, I'm struggle with it, because when policies say things like this, it draws us into wanting to say, well, what does the review look like? For instance, it says the board does a curriculum audit, you know, um, and it's the audit, we either have to carve out time to, to see the findings of, you know, audits and P D reviews and things like that, that we are, um, technically responsible for, or the language needs to be different.
So, let me, yeah, um, on the P D part specifically, so we do post our professional development plan, um, and then the other thing that we do report to the board is the teacher satisfaction with the professional development. Um, so we report that annually. In fact, that was reported with one of the, um, non-negotiable measures at the retreat.
Right.
Um, so, you know, so I do feel like we meet that with the, you know, with, 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 you, you are seeing the data of teachers feel that our professional development is, is positively affecting them in their classroom environment.
And thank you for clarifying that.
Sure.
Yeah. Um, I'll, I'll, uh, just some big things, but, um, and ideas. Uh, the other, the other, I'm sorry, and the other one is, um, I G A G, teaching about, um, alcohol and tobacco. What about the training for teachers? And where does that fall in? And it reminded me about, um, that we'd had a draft N R C A policy, uh, out there for a couple of years, you know, that I know we've been trying to refine, and, um, it's, it hasn't come forward as a policy for us to adopt yet, but we have seen it in draft.
Legislation just passed that it will come into law, so V S B A will be working on one that we're bringing forward. We actually talked about that at our last policy review committee, because we had been working on a draft, and Mr. Cloud had been working on that with us to look at all the legal ramifications of it. And when we met last, we knew since that turn of legislation that V S B A will be giving us a model policy soon, instead of recreating our own and then having to go back to V S B A's, the decision was to work with V S B A's.
Okay, okay. I appreciate that. Um, but that, that back to the piece around training for teachers in that policy, I guess V S B A, that wasn't part of.
So anytime we have updates in policy that are curricularly related, um, or instructurally related, I work directly with Mr. Brady and the senior coordinators on making sure it's included in their mandatory professional development. So with this specifically in the health classrooms, Mr. Per, Mr. Person has added that to his mandatory citywide training that will occur August thirteenth. So anytime we have changes in policy that affect curriculum, we do that with all teachers when we have the mandatory citywide, um, during pre-service week. Every time we see these updates, I make sure they know once we have them. So they, Mr. Person's had it since, um, these were May updates, so since May to, to plan for that.
Anyone else? All right, you will, if any additional questions, please feel free to reach out to Dr. Burson, but these policies will be on the Sep, September, I'm already in September.
August twenty.
August twenty-first, business meeting for, for a vote. Okay, we're in, no other business from anyone?
Remind them first day of school.
Oh, yeah.
Nineteenth.
August nineteenth, first day of school.
Be present, no matter what.
No matter what. So again, thank you all for your patience and the real robust discussion. Everyone have a great evening.